This conference will now be recorded.
Right, good evening, everyone. And welcome to the special municipal council meeting of December 28th, 2020. Call the order, please.
Hess here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Mayor Protem Johnson here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell here.
Councilman Noak.
Councilman Noak here.
And Mayor Walagora.
Mayor's here. Thank you, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Enter can I motion to approve the agenda this evening?
So moved, Councilman Noak.
Johnson, second.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, yes. I would like to modify the agenda by adding a council discussion right after a public comment. If everyone is agreeable to that. Seem to have left out any.
So moved, Johnson.
Second, Noak.
Moment, writing it down. Okay, Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes, Johnson.
Councilman Mitchell?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, I.
And Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
Hey, thank you. Any other modifications to the agenda this evening? I think none. We have one. One item on our agenda this evening, it's titled Township Emergency Request for Short Term Fire Services. I believe our Chief Forbush is going to do a brief presentation on that. And then we will go into public comment. And then some council discussion, the township, I believe, is on the call as well. Can someone from the township, just before chief goes, can someone from the township just let me know that you can hear us okay and that there aren't any issues? All right, well, that's not what I expected. Let's hold on just a second. I do want to verify that the township supervisor and trustees can hear us.
We did do a sound check earlier and they were fine. Not sure what's, what's going on right now.
Well, they're muted right now.
Maybe they're conducting their other business real quick and then going into this subject.
Oh, they, well, we might be ahead of them. Okay.
Yep.
We, we might be ahead of them, so.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you. Forgot that they were starting us at the same time we were. We'll give them just a minute, chief. No problem.
Good evening. Can everybody hear us from the city?
Yes, we can, and you can hear us as well.
That is affirmative, mayor.
All right, we have, we've started our meeting. We are at the point of having Chief Forbush give us presentation on our topic tonight, so we will move right into that. Chief Forbush, the floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. On December 17th, the Alpena Township Board met to discuss an impending staffing crisis in their fire department. Due to several resignations and retirements, they will be left with one full-time firefighter and their fire chief by late December. Township Chief Robbins advised the board that they would only be able to staff one station until more staff could be hired and trained. Their citizens have been very clear that unmanned stations are unacceptable. This afternoon, as of December 22nd, a virtual meeting was conducted with Mayor Walagora, Mayor Protem Johnson, City Manager Smolinski, and myself on the city side, and Supervisor Skibby, Trustees Polley and Reinert, and Chief Robbins on the township side. The group had extensive discussion on several options and came to a consensus on the third option that had been presented. The recommended project includes the following features. Alpena Fire would staff one ALS ambulance crew at the Township North Side Station. Typically, one officer paramedic and one firefighter paramedic or EMT would be set, would be staffed at that, on that unit. AFD would accept full responsibility and authority over any emergency in North Alpena Township during this temporary agreement. AFD could use township, the township's north side engine for fire calls and in fact would take whatever truck is appropriate to that particular emergency. Chief Robbins would conduct training for all AFD personnel on their specific apparatus so that our people would have expertise on their trucks to be able to operate them effectively. The AFD crew could use or request the township tanker for fires. And on first alarm, we would dispatch Alpena Fire crews, both the north side crew and the city crews, some, not all. Alpena Township paid-on-call personnel, which will work alongside of us, and also our press skill township partners, who of course join the north end of, of the north side of Alpena Township with the 3,000 gallon tanker as well. So I think that partnership will work very well for us while we help the township get back on their feet. Township paid-on-call firefighters would respond and operate under AFD command. We would not offer any administrative, community risk reduction, or training support, as this is not a merger, it's simply a staffing agreement temporarily. And we came up with a fee for service of $125,000 for a six-month contract. And the rationale for that is right in front of me, here it is. The rationale for that is if we take two on-duty staff, which costs roughly 100,000 a year, that's 200,000. They do about 20 fires a year, they said in their, Chief Robbins reported in their last meeting, which is more than we do. But if there were 20 fires a year, there would be 10 in six months. We typically get two shifts on a full department page, so we have 18 firefighters on overtime at $22 an hour. The minimum overtime is 2.75 hours, so that's 26,000. We cut half off of those numbers. Add in 11,000 for ancillary supplies, foam, fuel, those kinds of things. So the total for the six-month contract would be 125,000. And the purpose of that is not to make a profit in any way, but merely to make sure that the Alpena citizens that fund the department don't fund the township operation also. It would have to be self-sustaining. And I feel that at that level, it would be. Now, I must make it a point, to point out that the joint press release that went out earlier this month, announcing tonight's meeting in fact, was co-authored by Chief Robbins and I, and approved by the applicable officials when it was released. Public comment is encouraged prior to and at the meeting tonight. But the township officials have indicated that they urgently need staffing assistance beginning January 1st. It should again be emphasized that this is project is a temporary solution to an urgent staffing shortage and is not a merger of the departments. Are there any questions that I can help you with, council?
No, chief, just a quick comment. Thank you, this is Councilman Noak. Thank you for the rationale behind that. I think that was well thought out and well explained. I appreciate your efforts on this.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else on council, and then I'm going to shift over to the township board for any comments from the township board or questions for chief?
Nothing.
I have, I have nothing, but I would like to thank everyone for their work on this. Thank you to both of the chiefs. I hope this works out well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, thank you.
Hey, township board, do you have any, any questions or comments for Chief Forbush?
Well, I appreciate the, the opportunity, mayor. At this point in time, I, I thought it may actually behoove this conversation to have Chief Robbins add anything that Chief Forbush may have missed, if there is anything? You can speak up. Yeah. I'm getting buttered and give you a microphone. So we have no additional comments by Chief Robbins. Are there any comments or questions for Chief Forbush or City Council at this point in time?
Chief, I have a question for you. This is Steve Lappin.
Yes, sir.
On the, when we, when we look back early on the, the original relationship, had a fee, I believe, of 300,000. And then there was some discussion about manning both stations. And the revised cost, had we considered a merger, would have been, I believe, 415,000 dollars a year. There was about an extra 115,000-ish to man those stations. So if I were to just extrapolate this out, these 125,000, that, that becomes about a $76,000 additional cost. And so could you, could you go back over those numbers for me, please?
Sure, you're right, the short-term solution is more expensive than the long-term solution and involves a few less services. Kind of like if you rent an apartment month-to-month versus if you lease it. If we have a long-term relationship and we know that we have a long-term relationship, there are some economies of scale that we could, we could throw into that. But this is not intended to be that. This is intended to be a short-term relationship, just to help you guys get through your, your situation. The, to go over it again very quickly, on-duty staff is 100,000 per year times two, that's 200,000. 20 fires a year times 18 firefighters, at $22 an hour, that's the average rate between captain and a, a starting firefighter for 2.75 hours of overtime is 26, 730. If we take half the fires and half the months out, because it's a six-month contract and therefore there are only 10 fires instead of 20, that brings us to 113. We had ancillary supplies, foam, fuel, those kinds of things. And that's where we get to 125. Agreed, if you made the 125, double it, made it a year, that'd be 2, 250. But this is only one station and it's only six months, and that's why it's, it's less costly.
You said something about fuel?
Yes, sir, we're going to drive the animals back and forth to your, to your station for the entire year.
We don't have the ability, we don't have the ability to use the VLS.
I'm sorry?
The, the ALS system, excuse me, the ALS ambulance is better equipped than the VLS, I think.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't be using the township's ambulance, we would be using ours. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, chief. Are there any additional questions by trustees?
So, one question, trustee Crowell. I guess I would look at, what would it take to do three months versus six?
What would it cost, you say?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't think it could be done in three months, but I could certainly work up those numbers, and I'm sure it wouldn't be hard to figure them out. I'm really not too sure that it can be done in six. My concern is, for you, is that if you try and hire people off the street and train them up to a level that they can operate autonomously alone at a station, that's going to take some time. When we hire people off the street, even if they're paramedics already, it takes a year to get them off probation. So I figured six months was the very least that you could manage. If you can do it in a shorter time, we're certainly amenable to that. We're simply trying to help out. So I can, I can redo those numbers if you'd like, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This is Laura Ellery Summers. I just wondered, could there be a, even if we didn't switch, you know, we could still do the three-month option like trustee Crowell said, but what about an out clause? Say we're, you know, into this and we're four months down the road or whatever. Is there an out clause that either side could, you know, you know, end this if that's what we choose?
Yes, there's a termination clause in the, the final agreement if we come to an agreement. To be honest, I haven't read that. Our city attorney added it today, but there is a term in termination clause so that you could get out. If on the other hand, you needed more time, we can arrange that as well. We're, we're pretty flexible.
So is that termination clause in the paperwork we have?
No, no.
No, that's.
This is a, what was presented this evening for both council and for this board, was a threat. This is not signed and ready to go. We're looking for public comment. We're doing everything that we've been instructed that we should give considerations to do. And we're following each and every step as we move forward. To, I think everybody's question on this board thus far is, is there an early termination? Is there, what does it look like? That will be addressed. What we're here to do is talk about getting the protections that we must have in line. So if after a, a vote and ample discussion and public comment, we can agree to everything to a say, the point of, upon last inspection of legal to be signed on by mayor, city council, supervisor, township board. So that's where, this isn't a, we tried that, it didn't work. So we're having that discussion.
And I know, this is Rachel Smolinski. Bill Piper is with us on the phone. I don't know if he can address that question.
Yeah, as far as termination, I mean, if the parties wanted to agree that there's a certain amount of time that you could give each other notice on to terminate, I mean, I would suggest that it not be less than 30 days. But if during that six-month period, you want to give 30-day notice and both sides are agreeable to that, I have not specifically talked with Chief Forbush about that. But if that seems reasonable to both sides, then we could put that language in there.
I think 30 days is fair. I think that's fairly reasonable.
Bill, well, I have you on, on the line. Actually, to the chief as well. I think I tend to agree with the chief that three months may not be realistic, in fact, six months may not be realistic. If, if we needed to extend this contract, could we establish a in-advance cost within business?
We could. I mean, I would leave that up to Chief Forbush. I don't have expertise in the, in the cost amount, but once again, we could also build in, you know, something that says upon 30 days' notice, this could be extended for another 30 days or 60 days or whatever, whatever ends up happening. I mean, six months, as, as Chief Forbush has suggested, may not be enough, but if we wanted to continue it past, then we would either need a new agreement or some language in there that gives an option to extend it upon a certain amount of notice.
I would say it would be amenable to that. It's up to the, to the council to decide, but we're, we're certainly willing to work with you any way we can.
So is this letter of agreement that we have with our union a part of this discussion? It touches upon it? It's not really. That's more of the internal side of it. There's, that was clarified by Helen Mills. There's no made current agreement in this scenario. What the letter of agreement was internal science to allow chief some more flexibility utilizing non-unionized members.
Well, we talked about that.
There.
Well, I'm, let's finish one thought, so I can kind of follow through.
Well, so the only reason I bring that up is because you and I set it down with the union and agreed to a 90-day extension, that letter of agreement. But this agreement has a simple month.
Yeah, and that's, that was to the point. I, I just, in the volley with this, let Elway doesn't, that's, we can get it clarified to 90 days. I had our labor attorney go to, because other, outside of the 90 days was to have it run concurrent to the six-month extension. That was also a part of that conversation.
Right, but that's not what we agreed to when we had that meeting. So that's why I say it. You know, I agreed to a 90-day with them, and now I want to come here and look at a six-month, which I'm not okay with it.
That's the letter of, so you're getting my head of what we're talking. I'm not opposed to that point of clarification. Right now, that piece of paper doesn't have a ton to do with this, that's at the time. We can always address that.
So you're saying there's no guideline to put your hair into this?
I was under the understanding that the union.
Just give me, may I add a point?
Excuse me, what was that?
I'm sorry, may I add a point real quick?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out in case it wasn't absolutely clear, I apologize for that. The option that was recommended by the committee is, is one where the city would operate the north side station and cover the north side for the term of this agreement. The existing Alpena Township Fire Department would continue to operate the south side. And so the personnel that are left on, on ATFD would still be working, protecting that half of the township. We would simply be stepping in temporarily to cover the other half, because there aren't enough left to do both. I, I'm not sure if I made that clear. Thank you.
No, thank you for that. My, my question is, is there a counter?
So this is from, and, and Lizzie is watching. So she said that we will bargain the impact on the union if two months of approval comes. That's all I can.
And may I interject?
Yes, sir.
Having said it on the expression, I don't see one conflicting with the other, because we're talking about two different. Residents, one is, one is, I threaten the union in an agreement with them, and one doesn't, doesn't follow the other necessarily.
Yeah, and that's what she states as well. The union approval, although you're one piece, but not different than the foundation before you. So. It's, but to your, to your point, that is a beautiful point, but I'm okay. So. On the 90 days, for just. So are there any other questions about this topic for Chief Forbush, Dave, Chief Robbins? Chief Robbins, as to Chief Forbush's comments of six months may not be longer. Because we're also hearing three months, so I would really like to hear what your point of view is to that, that timeline.
Our original discussions internally in the township, I believe, were, were three months with the possible. Three-month extension. Um, I, I don't have a problem compared with the initial six-month agreement. Other than, the, the only problem I could see is, is if we get, we get to a point where we're, we're staffed up, so it's the that haven't, the contract, city continues to man an auto station. That sort of would give me an opportunity to run two-man shifts down at the south side to get these guys off to their opportunities. So.
Are there any other comments?
I would like, just, just for my own benefit, I would just like that right down to that 125,000, I know Chief Forbush went through it, just to have, so we know what makes up that 125,000.
So I, do we have any other conversation? Trustee Crowell, trustee Polley. Ryan there. Mayor Walagora, I think that exhausted all the questions and your comments on this side.
Okay, and I caught the vast majority of your discussion. Some of it was a little echoey, but I, I think I caught the gist of it. Some discussion about the length of the contract mainly and the cost. I guess I'll give my two cents. We're here to, we're certainly here to, to assist you guys. Chief has put together a program that will work for us. I'm, I don't, I don't have an issue with a, some type of out clause, obviously. If, you know, you guys are up and running and things are going well within six months and you don't need us there anymore, there really certainly isn't a necessity for us to stay. How that, how that out, out can be worded is, is up to chief and Bill Piper, I guess. It, that might pose some financial issues, wondering, you know, so an out clause, how, how do we have to, like, let's say it's four months from now, and so I guess some method of calculation, calculating that down to, down to four months probably wouldn't be very difficult, because Chief Forbush's values that he put on the six months were, 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 I'll just call it fairly elementary to, for lack of better terms. I, I think they were easily understandable. So, so I don't have a problem, obviously, with an out clause. I, I don't particularly, I would rather see a six-month agreement with an, with an agreeable out clause than, than a three-month agreement with an extension. As a matter of fact, I would like to, I would like to have an agreement without an automatic extension, even if it goes 60, even if it goes six months. I, I'd really like to revisit this whole thing in six months if, if either party, mainly the township, at that point, has a necessity to extend it. And, and that's fine. We have no idea what the circumstances are going to be six months from now, but I would like to revisit it a little bit more in detail than to have an automatic, an automatic extension put into it, if, if that makes sense.
That makes sense to us, I do believe.
You know, the only thought I have is that if we have a situation where it's imminent or clear that we're not going to be able to handle something within a six-month period, I'd like to have some understanding or clarification or some, something written into a contract that if we extend it, it would be for X fee. As far as the, as far as a clause, a state clause, probably a simple pro-rata clause can be inserted in the contract.
Yeah.
What, do you hear that?
I, I did. Not sure who that was, but okay, um. Yeah, that's, that, that sounds reasonable to me. I wanted to, this kind of, I guess, it's, and it's okay. I, I don't want to do too much more discussion, I guess, if, before we do a public, public input. I'm going to go, I'm going to go with with, I'm going to just ask real quick if anybody has any questions for Chief Forbush, and then what I, what I'd like to do is take public input. Hopefully that doesn't, it's not going to be too difficult. I'll ask RIT Steve if anyone has indicated that they have public input.
Nothing in the chat window.
Oh.
Nothing in the chat window. Nothing in the chat window.
Okay, so, so here's how it works for the city on our meetings. If, if you would like to, if you would like to do public. to, if you would like to do public comment, uh, click on the, on the chat thing and, and just put a hands up, or I have public comment, something for our IT guy to, to visually recognize that you have public comment. And I'll give it just a couple of minutes here, or a minute, and then I'll shift over to, uh, the township's live meeting.
Mayor, I do see that we have, um, maybe one or two people on the phone, too, so you might want to ask about them as well.
Oh, and if you're on the phone, I guess, uh, just, um, just unmute and, and let us know that you have public comment. Thank you, Rachel. Okay, um, Mr. Skibby, I'm not getting any public comment from our site or phones, do you have live public comment there, sir?
I have, Mayor, I have actually reached out in our chat box requesting if anybody has public comment at this point in time. Is there anybody on our telephone system that has any public input? I tend to agree with the mayor, it seems to be, uh, pretty quiet on all lines of communication at this point.
Okay, um, thank, thank you, sir. At this point, I'd like to get, uh, some council discussion, if, uh, city council, has some discussion, uh, or, or follow up questions, I guess mine would be, since I'm, I'm already unmuted, um, mine would be, uh, how, how, uh, Chief and Rachel would like to proceed, I guess, with, uh, um, obviously, we'll, we'll, we'll need a, um, a workable out clause added, and then the final details of the, of the, of the contract, it sounds like, no, no one is completely opposed to the contract, so I, I just want to get somebody's perspective on how we would proceed from today, because, um, we're talking about just a couple of days here.
Yeah, I wonder if we couldn't, uh, and, and this is a question for Bill Piper, if we couldn't have, um, a motion that includes the, um, I think there were two potential changes, um, and out, maybe it was just one in out clause. And I, I believe there was some discussion that was placed still on, you know, the, the six month, the, the term of the agreement, but if it's just a couple of minor things, I would suggest that, that those be in the motion along with approval, if that's the direction that the council wants to go, but I would defer to, um, Bill Piper for that.
Okay, and I, I guess, before we, before we do that, I, I just, I don't want to, and I, and I agree, I, I do want to go back, I want to go back to the township, uh, just briefly, uh, so we, so we don't move or start working on something that's, that's not, that's not going to work for you. So, so am I to understand that a, that a six month agreement with an out clause, um, at, at 30 days, I think I heard 30 days, so let's just throw that out there, is, is a 30 day out clause, uh, and a six month agreement, um, going to fulfill your needs there, uh, for the time being?
Uh, and I think with those two instances being addressed, I think the, the last one was, uh, considerations of a pro-rata.
So that was clause. That would be part of the termination.
Okay, so we got determination.
So the, the, in the event that we needed to, uh, in the event that we needed to extend the contract, um, I'd like to get an idea of what that might look like financially.
Not, excuse me, not to speak out of turn, I would think that we could take the, the, uh, cost recovery rationale for the six month version and, and simply extrapolate it out in twelfths to figure out if it had to be seven months or eight months, or whatever the case is. Short, with, without a, a long-term agreement, I think the, the short-term pricing is a, a fair, uh, assessment of cost recovery for the cost of providing the service.
Trusty Ryan?
Yeah, the, I, I have to say, I appreciate the city being, uh, so willing to work with us here and, uh, from my point of view, they are our best, uh, option in, in this situation's crisis. Couple of questions I have, and when I was looking through this again, that I didn't think to ask before, was probably for the pressures benefit more than anyone in the actual situation. Are we paying this as a lump sum upfront? Are we paying this monthly? Are we paying it in arrears or in advance? You know, month in advance, month in arrears, are we paying it, uh, at the end of the term, which I doubt. So those things, I think, need to be just clarified in the agreement. The other thing is that frankly, I'm less concerned about being, wanting to, at our end, wanting to get out of this early and, uh, more concerned about whether we can get ourselves ready to go total in six months. So, uh, that's, that's the bigger concern I have. As far as Mr. Lapp's point on the extension, going with the extensional cost, or, or whether we even have an extension, I kind of agree with the mayor on that. I think for one thing, we need to have an experience factor, I think the city would want an experience factor for the six month contract, uh, and like to see that as well. Plus, uh, see where we're at in, in, in six months, if we're talking about a one month extension as opposed to a three month extension or something, we, uh, we don't even know what we're going to need at that point until we see how many folks are available, uh, to come into our department. That's all I think.
Thank you very much for your comments, Trustee.
To, to, to pick it back up. To pick it back up, Russ, Trusty Ryan, um, I think, I think a monthly payment would be way better than, you know, at the end of six months, but I'd like to see that written in the, in, well, monthly.
So we have, uh, a, an ask of a breakout of a monthly payments schedule, uh, and, and does this end everything that in these discussions, as, uh, Attorney Piper, I'm sure is online. When you guys are working on this, uh, it would be my expectation, uh, that any working draft be sent, uh, to me so that we can get it to legal, uh, as fast as possible, so that the finalization can take place, uh, once we're done with discussion. But we do have, uh, Trusty Foley has comment?
Yes, I, I'd like to thank the city and the chief for working on, putting something together that we're in dire need. And the fact that you're working on this and you're working with a sister community, I think it's great for both communities. Also, and all these little details, I think, can be worked out. And also, I think, and when it comes to payment plans, I think you should be in charge of how you want your money. Since you're good enough to give us a service, I think you could tell us how you want to pay. If it's an issue that we can't handle, at that particular point, we should be able to discuss with you, and I'm sure you worked something out with it. But I'd just like to thank the city, the city council, what you're doing and what you are helping us with in our situation. Thank you.
I would again reiterate, I would prefer, I mean, for our cash flow, a monthly payment for the city. I mean, I could play it in there.
Rachel, are you able to speak?
Yep, I'm so sorry to interrupt, it's, it's really hard to hear you all sometimes. Um, we do, in number six of the agreement, state that it should be paid on a monthly basis, and I believe that, um, Clerk Soye could dictate when that is.
It does, unfortunately, that point of clarification did not make the draft that we have before us.
Okay.
No, no, I, I do applaud you for making a point of clarification. I, I think that the facts of the matter are, uh, we're working together to look at, uh, a scenario where we can be operating a Mancini map for a short period of time. The time has been defined, uh, the scale of payment in its total for said time is defined, uh, everything else is smaller, and I do agree, but thank you very much for the clarification for a monthly disbursement, uh, to the, the total sum of 125,000 for six months, which puts in that, uh, a shy of $21,000 monthly. I, I, unless there's any other comment, uh, from the trustees, I'm going to pass it back to you, uh, you, Mayor.
Okay, um, thank you, and thank you all for the comments, of course, our chief and staff have put a significant amount of time into this, so, uh, we definitely appreciate them. And it seems a consensus of my council that we don't, we don't, I don't hear anyone specifically opposed to the agreement. I would like to see the final language, um, before approval, but, uh, I, I don't want to send, I don't want to send Chief or Rachel or Anna or even the township board, um, go too much further with, with what they need to do if there's some opposition here on our council, so, um, with some of these details worked out, um, I, I think, I, again, I'm, I apologize for not hearing everyone, um, perhaps, perhaps Norm should do all the talking because I heard him the best, um, but, uh, but with, with that said, I, I think I, I would like to stick with what I had mentioned, uh, as far as a six month, a six month agreement with a, with a, um, an agreeable out clause, I, I just, um, anything shorter, and I feel like, I feel like in March, we're going to be right back here. And I think it'll be difficult to work out the numbers because they're already a running average of, of years, we, I don't think we can, I don't think we can narrow that, those averages down, um, too much further, so if it's, if it's agreed, um, and I'll ask for a, opposition, I suppose, uh, that we, that we continue to finalize a six month agreement with a 30 day out clause, um, and, and what that, what that out clause, out would entail, um, if it's, uh, you know, three, four months from now, how that, you know, how that is going to be prorated, so, and I think that would be pretty easy since you're paying a monthly anyhow, so, uh, if that's agreeable without, uh, any op- opposition, I'd like them to move forward on that.
Noah, Councilman Noah Kier, Mr. Mayor, um, the only comments I have are, I, I'm in agreement with you that this could be a, a strong six month agreement with an out clause, I have no problems with that at all. As far as, uh, you know, uh, you know, timelines for additional cost after the six month agreement, I mean, to be fair to the chief and to be fair to all, I mean, after the, the five months, if they would need an extension, I think he deserves at least to have an opportunity to look at what cost and have some actual numbers in front of him, rather than us trying to establish a cost ahead of time to, you know, tell them what it would be if we do decide to extend, so, uh, I am in favor of moving forward with the six month with an out clause, if they, they do get their department up running a little bit quicker, I'm fine with getting out of this a little bit sooner, uh, but as far as extending, I think that there, you know, we should look at it maybe four months or five months and let the chief reestablish numbers of what an extension would look like at that time, if that's acceptable to you, Chief.
Absolutely, sir.
I agree, if it, if it looks like we're going to go the whole six months, um, we're, we're going to know 30 days before that expires, um, I think, so, you know, when we look at, if we, we need, we need to seriously take a look at this five months from now and determine whether, so, so we're not three days out from when we need to extend it, uh, and I'm sure the chief is, I, I'm sure both chiefs are going to keep an eye on that and be able to give, um, both boards an update, um, on where we're at, probably about four, four or five months from now, four months from now, so.
No problem.
So to be honest with you, oh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, not a problem, Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering, are you anticipating, do you need to take an actual motion to get to, uh, a working final, or what is your next step, sir?
Yeah, that, that was actually going to be my next question, um, this type of scenario is a little bit new to me, um, so, so I would like, I, I don't know, I'm going to kind of leave it to council, um, uh, i- if, if someone on council would, I'd entertain a motion to, to perhaps approve, um, ci- city staff and myself to, to enter into, and enter into a contract with the agreed upon changes, um, if you want to see it first, uh, it might be a via email type of thing, um, so I, I just, I want to proceed however you guys are comfortable with it, perhaps Bill Piper even has a, has a suggestion, he's usually better at that than I am.
What, uh, what I heard was, uh, the agreement as drafted would be modified to, uh, clearly establish that the, uh, rate would be paid monthly, that there would be, uh, language allowing the agreement to be terminated early on 30 days written notice, uh, depending upon the date in the month that it's terminated, uh, that month's payment, or the ensuing payment would be on a pro rata basis, so as an example, if a notice was given on March 15th and the contract ended on April 15th, then the township would be responsible for one half of the, uh, April payment. If the agreement is to be extended beyond the six month term, the cost would be reevaluated at that point in time, or, or 30 days before any extension. And then I know the township's not in possession of this, but it does, it does have language to be, to be paid on a monthly basis already in there. And unless I missed something, that would be the, that would be the changes to the existing agreement that, uh, both sides currently have.
Yeah, I, and, and I think that was about all I heard, um, as far as the extension goes, I, I just, I just want to reiterate that, that it's probably more than just costs may need to be taken a look at, and, and we'll, we'll follow what the chiefs, um, what both chiefs, uh, suggest, I mean, that, there may be, there may be other circumstances that, that, that they learn in the first several months that, you know, that we need to sit back and discuss or, or, you know, regroup, so, um, but I, but I think that's fine, I, I don't, if I knew what they were, and chief knew what they were, we'd put them in this agreement, but, uh, so let's, I, I want to, and Bill, I don't know, Bill Piper, uh, you know, when you, when you put any language in there about an extension, I guess, I just, I want to make it clear that I'd like the whole plan reevaluated, not, not just the cost, but, but everything that we've done and, and how things have worked, so I'm not really sure, I don't want it to sound too, too simplified, as far as it, as an extension goes, I'd like it to be, um, something a little bit more, uh, all encompassing, if you don't mind. So maybe just, maybe perhaps, uh, uh, a reevaluation or, or something like that, I don't, something other than just finances, because it, it might be more than that.
Agreed.
And to that, Mayor, if I could interject and add one thing to this process?
Absolutely, uh, you're part of the agreement, so that'd be fine.
I, I, I appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, as Attorney Piper is working on it, would you please have him include, uh, both, uh, Mr. Golden and, uh, Ms. Mills, our labor attorney, so that, uh, both legal councils are, are well versed in this topic, and then way they can, uh, email the, the finalized language version of this draft, uh, to all, uh, not only council members, but to our board as well.
Uh, I can do so.
Appreciate it, Mr. Piper.
So, uh, Bill Piper, again, with those, with what you've, what you've got so far, um, and assuming that nothing else comes up, how, how would you expect council to proceed, this evening, knowing that we'd like this to kind of get started in a couple of, what, uh, less than a week?
Yeah, the first is Friday, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so if we're really going to start this on the first, uh, we're going, we're going to have to vote on it tonight with those proposed changes, uh, I'm not sure if there's any other way to do it at this point.
I guess I just have one question, this is, uh, Mayor Protem Johnson, is the township satisfied with the changes that will happen in the contract, um, per Bill's, per Bill's, um, description? Do they have any objection? Do they have any objections to any of it? Because I don't want to vote on something and then have somebody say, oh, no, I want to change this. No, we don't agree with that, then we're wasting our time. Are there any other suggestions, or do you agree completely with what Bill Piper has said?
Township board, are there any objections to the discussion that is taking place thus far in terms of an intergovernmental contract for services? I personally would just like to see it paper.
Fundamentally, this is Steve Lappin, fundamentally, what we've discussed, from my standpoint, I'm saying as far as.
So I, for the most part, Mayor Protem Johnson, that addresses your concerns as undiscovered. I think we all would feel better just to see it on paper, but we're all ears open this evening. So I think we're all agreeing as to where we're at thus far.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, thank, thank you, Cindy. What I would.
Sorry, ma'am, but to, to Cindy's point, I have not seen the, the, we have not seen the version. If there's anything different than the version of the draft that we have before us, and what's before you, we already know that there is a different version. I guess that's the only point of clarification. I know, I, I know where you're coming from, Protem Johnson. I, yes, we have, we have a draft that was probably draft B and not the final C, so. As in, there was no clarification as to monthly payment, so.
Okay. Can I ask one more question? Is there any way that we can send the draft that council has in front of us to the township right now, so that they can see it?
Send it to my email, skibbyn@alpena township.com, I will print it. That way, everybody has that draft in front of them.
And who's going to send that?
It's actually in the public packet, and the only change, I believe, that was made late was that, were the monthly payments, and that was, was a suggestion by Bill Piper. So there's no other change. And then, you know, there would be, you know, signature lines in any final copy. But I can, I can send that off to Nathan.
Okay, so Rachel will send that. But according to what Rachel said, the only difference in the copies would be number six, where it says the township shall pay the city $125,000 in exchange for six months of service as described in this agreement and paid on a monthly basis. But Rachel is sending that.
Yeah, I just, so I just forwarded mine to Nathan as well. Basically, I just forwarded him the public packet that was emailed to me, because it does have the monthly basis part in it. It says draft all the way across the top. But, but I, and I understand, but, but Bill Piper is also going to make a couple of other changes that aren't in there, or clarifications, as far as, I think mainly, well, he just read them off. I think there were two or three things that he was going to add, just based on the conversation that we've had here. I guess, I guess just to kind of get us out of this, so you can, so the township can resume their meeting. I'm sure you have other things to discuss. I would, I, I guess I would entertain a motion from city council that, that authorizes the city to enter into this, enter into this agreement contract, once it's revised by Bill Piper. And, and if you do, and you do so, I, I can assure you, you're, you're all going to see it, because he's going to, he's going to email it. And so if you, if you see something you didn't expect, or there's more in there, then, then definitely raise a flag. But I, I think we're, I think we're all in agreement as to what it's going to say at this point. And then, if the township wants to follow up with that as well, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, I believe our, our clerk has a question.
Yeah. Anna, your mic isn't working? You're not muted, but I can't really tell what you're saying.
Can you hear me now?
Very lightly, yeah.
How about now?
Yeah, that's a little bit better.
Okay. My recommendation would be to require payments monthly in advance, and we can, we can send that invoice. So if this agreement is passed, then we would send one out right away for January. And then, I'd have to get February's out right away, too.
So I, I have printed, but I'm also looking at both Chief Warbush and Mayor Walagora's forwarded email. The only difference is the latter part of the sentence in section six of general terms is described in this agreement and paid on a monthly basis. That's the only language.
So township, I don't, were you able to hear what our clerk suggested as far as making payments in advance?
Yes. Why don't you, why don't you consider January, February payment now, and then monthly?
Just go February 1st for March.
Did you hear that recommendation as to the billing statute? I'm just sending our first bill collectively of January and February, then to be moving into the third month on a monthly basis.
Okay, so then in February, we could send your March invoice?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. That sounds agreeable. Okay.
Matt, do you want a motion?
Sure.
Okay. So, Mayor Protem Johnson, I make a motion with all of the changes that our attorney has said, plus the change that Anna had said, that they pay in advance. And it's a six-month contract. We'll review it 30 days before the six months is up, if we're still in it, and go from there. Does that work?
Councilman Noak, I second.
Yeah, I guess in your motion, I would suggest that you authorize the, authorize myself and staff to, to enter into that agreement.
And I add that to my motion.
I second that amendment.
Attorney Piper, is that correct?
Yes, I will, I will have it to everybody before lunch tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are we ready for roll call on this?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Councilwoman Hess, yes.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, township, we will leave it up to you as to how you would like to proceed on your end. But you're now aware of where we are at our end, and, and we will read the contract over when Bill sends it out. Bill's going to copy you guys as well, and we'll just stay in, stay in contact then.
We, I appreciate it, as does the entire board, ma'am, and council. Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yep. Okay, so to that end, we have, before us, a somewhat ratified contract to be coming to us tomorrow.
Don't we have to make the same motion?
Yeah, basically, that's where I'm going at, so. Yes, I can.
Thank you.
So at this point in time, I will entertain a motion to allow myself to sign a ratified agreement that corresponds with the discussions that took place with the city council's vote this evening, to, to which, as are all materials that flow through council, will be disseminated to all trustees, this is not how it's symbolized, to be agreed upon. But, the motion that we heard on the TV is the motion that I'm looking for. The ability to move forward with a six-month term contract with the city for services at the cost of $125,000 knowledge for six months, with the amended draft contract to be brought forward tomorrow.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Polian, is there support?
I support it.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion?
I guess I would like what the motion.
Here, here, here's what I've got.
Okay, thank you.
I have no, or if this is your motion, you let me know. So the motion to enter into a contract with the city for fire, emergency services for 60 days with 30-day out provision.
Six months.
Six months with a 30-day out provision, six-month contract with the payments to the city of, you said something less than $20,000.
$20,833,000.
April monthly in advance, with the January, February payment to be made before January 1, 2021. I don't think there was any other provisions that Bill was going to add.
So, because we don't have a final agreement, I do think normally we went to people's side.
I was going to recommend, I do, is that I think, I'm, I'm coming from the corporate side, but I think that the supervisor deciding, or an alternative, it should be Mr. Polian and the supervisor.
So we have a motion, we're, we're in discussion, the motion's being clarified. Trustee Lappin, you have.
I think it's wonderful.
Okay. Yes.
I just wrote it out, I just wrote myself notes under this.
So we have, is there, is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion to put motion on? If not, roll call, vote please. Is it, roll call, vote.
Trustee Ryan?
Yep.
Trustee Polian?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
First to Lappin, yes. First to Ellen Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Pearl?
No.
Supervisor Skibby?
Aye. Motion passed. City council, I thank you for your time this evening and for calling a special meeting. We will be obviously in close communication moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We need a motion to, I'm assuming, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Second, Johnson.
Yes, I will be starting in just a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Bye now.